Well, asphalt, there's a lot of pros. It's the best initial surface for smoothness or any no cracks. It's cheaper than concrete and it can usually meet almost all time meet the universally accessible guidelines as far as grade and slope and firm and stable surface. Some of the disadvantage of that, though, it does have edges crack with vegetation. I just start to break down. There's constant maintenance, a crack filling and sealing. And there's also, it needs a complete overlay every eight to 10 years to make it hold up well. And there's little structural strength to span over soil problems below if there are any. Another surface to think about, though, is rubberized surface, which is kind of good for old bones and joints. Rubberized surfaces gaining some popularity as being a pliable surface. Nike regrind is one of the more popular surfaces where Nike is taking old tennis shoe materials and leftovers and creating a surface out of that. So it's a bit pliable. Maybe this makes sense at the BIA track as a year round surface. It's also you can make this year round because it is, you can sweep it or sweep snow off of it and have it available year round as opposed to other trails. You might not be able to do that. It is expensive and there's lots of transportation costs associated with those rubberized service. But I'm just presenting alternatives to you to think about as you think through your system. The next surface we want to consider is stabilized stone and natural crushed stone. Both of these are usually called crusher fines material. And crusher fines is an angular material. It is not pea gravel. It is not what you take off your flat roof. And too often people throw it on pea gravel and it erodes, it spreads, it moves, it washes away. That pea gravel is a horrible surface, but the crusher stone crusher fine is a minus three eights in size. It's angular and it's full of dust, whether it's limestone dust or sandstone dust or quartz dust or whatever, but it's full of dust and it's the dust and the stone that bind together that give it a firm and stable surface. Both of these hold up pretty well under heavy use. And they complement the aesthetic of the natural landscapes. So they might both work well for Crown Point. The stabilized surface includes a resin based material that binds the aggregate together. It's usually a pine resin base. Some are natural pine resins. You've probably heard of soil stabilizer or even road oil. These different surfaces, these different products can bind together. So you have a much more stable surface, a more weather resistant, so it's not muddy. And maybe the stabilized actually holds up better for heavy traffic than does the natural crushed stone. The biggest maintenance in these is maintaining the edge. As you can see on the poster and the picture on the left, it does have a curb edge. In this case, it's, it's, it looks like treated lumber, treated timbers. When there's no crushed fine edge, usually you'll start to see infiltration of materials, of grasses, vegetation weeds, and sometimes the edges break down. So two different ways of doing this stabilized surface. You can do 10 wood foot wide crusher fine pathways allows for two way traffic, strollers, wheelchairs, et cetera. The last surface type is just a natural surface type. It's kind of best when it's 18 to 24 inches wide. The TP trail lends itself to being continue to be a natural surface trail with a need for redesign, rerouting of some of the really steep segments. Want to keep your grades at less than eight percent. They're easy to maintain and with both natural surface trail improvements and with the crusher fine, it is something that youth crews, I've trained youth crews on how to install crusher fine stabilized crusher fine trails. And I actually did that with Mescalero Apache several years back. So it is something that can be done with local labor and done professionally with local labor with the right supervision and and training of the crews. Trail design guidelines are pretty critical in, in these backcountry situations to make sure you follow the the right guidelines, the right specifications. So you're not causing that scar on the land or further erosion. Amenities, lots of different amenities to think about. In this case, we're going to talk about benches and shade first. And how they can enhance your trail system. They can be very important amenities. They can make the trails more inviting to a broader group of users. And you have to use discretion when placing benches and shade structures. Is there a good view? Is there a real long walk from the trailer to the last bench? So thinking about those topics are pretty important. Benches and styles can vary from everything you see here from a big stone, a big slab of sandstone or granite or whatever it might be to a log bench to prefabricated. So these can be, you know, sensitive to the landscape and not introduce more modern features if you don't want to. So just providing some examples. Then shade structures are also a really important necessity, especially in the Southwest where we have no natural shade, not much canopy cover, very limited canopy cover in Crown Point. And we're seeing more and more research across the country that shows more people are more likely to use trails and parks if there's canopy cover. So if we want caregivers with their grandkids out on trails, we need to think about what kind of shade can we introduce into sections of the trail so people can get out of the hot sun. Provided a few examples of just kind of latias and logs and then some of the prefab stuff. Number of different products exist, but again, this can be done locally. I've even seen discarded log satellite dishes uses shade structures with, with different symbology printed, painted on the satellite dishes. So you can be creative. While not all bench locations may not require shade structure, all shade structures should probably have some bench installments and think about accessibility. And can someone with a wheelchair mobility impairment also access that area of the area, the shade? So benches and shade are probably a critical part to almost every part of your trail system to make it more inviting for residents and visitors. So there's three kinds of signage we want to talk about. We want to talk about directional signage, trailhead signage, and we want to talk about educational and motivational messaging signage. So directional signage is kind of the most common. Here's some examples that you can think about is, is the typical carcinite fiberglass flat post. Very inexpensive, put in the ground. You can sticker them to death with logos with who can use a trail, where it goes to, directions, distances, whatever you want. The second idea here shows better for an intersection which has a four way of four by four or six by six post. So you can have your directional arrows on that. And the third feature maybe is just a slab of sandstone or again, rock that could have routed in there, your logo and the trail name or distance or whatever it might be. Again, I'm trying to show different examples of directional signage. So things about signage is helpful to point out trail features and landmarks to make the experience more enjoyable. Signage and surface marking should be clear, concise and consistent. They should be easily read by all trail users and easily understood. To help them know where they're going and how far it is to get there. So how far is it to get to the grocery store from the post office or how far does it get to the grocery store from the chapter house? So those kinds of things help people and motivate them to maybe walk, oh yeah, I could walk a half mile and so forth. Trailhead signage, the next big type. So if we're going to introduce people into into the, into the system, we might want something that's a little more formalized. An example here is from Santa Fe, New Mexico, the Latira Trail System. So that's a three, three panel system. So the first panel shows an overall map of all the trails on the system. You could do the same. You could show a trail map of all of sidewalks and pathways and in Crown Point and you could have a zoom in area showing the specific area you're at. And you could have kind of the key and logos and how far things are. So people know how far they can get around. The second panel shows rules and regulations. Who can use the trail, who can't use the trail or certain periods of time you can't use the trail. Are there a loties that you have to work with to get permission, whatever the rules and regulations chapter wanted to pass for the trail system should be posted here. So people know those rules and regulations. And then for your local law enforcement can enforce that. If there's no glass, you know, no glass requirement or rule, then it's got to be posted. So people can enforce that. And then the third one is the information board. There's an upcoming fun run or a race or health fair or health screening. The sign information boards can be used to put up local information or if it's a meetup for a walk or a run, you can use that information board there. And then the other picture here kind of shows a different style of two independent boards. So having some interpretive elements on there showing where they're, where they're walking, what they see and so forth. But the trailhead signage is really the imitation. It's the gateway into your trail system. It's what you want to share with people. Some things you might want to include here are in addition to rules and regulations, you know, warning about poisonous plants, animals, dangerous weather conditions or other hazards. So one of the coolest signs I've seen is at White Sands National Park where they tell people when it's over 100 degrees, they probably should not go out and traps through the white sands. And they have a monstrous thermometer posted there at the trailhead. So people know that it's over 100 degrees. You should have a gallon or two of water, but that makes a huge impact on on going into a pretty dangerous environment if you're not prepared for it. And most park visitors are never prepared for where they're at. Sometimes you want information about the trails ecology, environment and tips to minimize environmental impacts. So trailhead signage is really important to consider. The last one is the educational and motivational signage. So here's one just showing that sensitive habitat. Here's another one just talking about the environment and that's a metal posted sign. We affectionately call these kind of books on the stick sometimes. Cause you're telling a story, but you're not telling too much of a story. So this is a trick to writing interpretive elements. And I believe the park service could secure support from either Chaco or Aztec to help with interpretive writing if we wanted that for your system. And then the other sign here is this motivational message. Since we know we want our system to support community health, public health, improve health outcomes in Crown Point. You can have these messages on your trails. This is on the, I believe on the North Golf Course. You know, be stronger than your excuses is just a motivational prompt. So I don't want my shoes tied today or I don't have the right clothes on. So be strong in your excuses gets people thinking about, yeah, I can go ahead and make that walk to the grocery store. Or I can do the BIA track one more time to get in a mile and a half or whatever it is. So those are really important components to your program, all those three types of signage. Lighting, do any of your trails think you need lighting? And if so, there's a couple of styles that are appropriate for trail systems. And all of these are pedestrian scale lighting. So lighting is, we don't want traffic lights. We don't want overhead leftover lights from some highway project illuminating your trail because it would pretty much ruin the whole experience throughout the whole community. But this lighting here kind of shows the solar panel lighting with that has probably it's an eight foot height off the an eight foot height for the, where the light actually is. So they're lower human scale lighting, pedestrian scale lighting. The other two examples are bollards. The center one is actually has a solar panels on top of the lighting bollard. So this would be good to illuminate, for example, a pathway if you had to connect between the two colleges for night classes as an example. Or you had to connect to some other place that gets a lot of evening or early morning traffic. The third one that shows an in-ground electrical system of bollards. They are spaced closer to parts. You can see from one bollard to another on the pathway, but they are low, you know, low wattage. Not, not designed to be a security lighting as much as they are ambiance and make the trail experience better. Your lighting should probably comply or should comply with the Night Sky Protection Act. And which New Mexico passed years ago with some, some great work with the park service out of Chaco and other places. It preserves dark skies and wildlife. Lenders should be flat in order to shed light only on the path below. So we're not trying to illuminate the neighbor's house or anything else except for the path below. And that's probably an important feature to think about for your lighting. So when you're doing your workbook, think about, wow, how many people use those trails? Those use for classes at night? Would it make sense to illuminate this? And you know, we can decide what makes sense better later on, but we want to know from you guys. Does it make sense to light part of this? Public art. Trail experience is so important. Examples here, public art include some metal cutouts, which is seen on the high desert trail system outside of Gallup. The middle one is actually a, a bee hotel, a pollinator hotel that's on City of Open Space, Albuquerque Open Space Visitor Center. So all those little features are places for bees to start a colony or whatever they need to do is a public art installation. And another piece here is just a chainsaw carving. So I imagine with the artistic talent at Crown Point, you end up with dozens of ideas of different public art. So maybe one trail is, is a Crown Point art feature trail. Out in Two Com Carri, I'm working with a welding class where they're going to probably weld together with scrap metal, different rattlesnakes to, to, because they're the Two Com Carri rattlers as a part of our trail system. So you can be very creative in the public art and enhances the experience, builds that community pride in what you're trying to do in Crown Point. And then fitness. Fitness stations may be, we have a public health goal for your project. So fitness stations may have a place on sections of your trail. Maybe it makes sense to have some of those at the BIA track or some other section. I think the key to the fitness stations to make them workable is to work on balance and cardio for the most part and maybe a little bit on strength, depending on how you figure this out. But I have in all my time doing this, I've yet to see an obese person trying to do a push up or a pull up in a public fitness station. They don't exist. So the people who use fitness stations that are strength based are the ones who are already fit and already going to the gym and already know how to do it themselves. So we shouldn't be spending money on the people who are fit in the stations. But seniors and others who are working with balance issues, bone strengthening issues can work on some of the cardio stuff and some of the balance topics that might help them. So fitness is another piece of the puzzle that might play into some parts of your trail system. Discovery spaces. There's a whole lot of movement in the last 10 years on rethinking playgrounds. We've learned that all the creative play that kids do does not happen at the shiny $200,000 swing set and slide set. It happens on the rough edges of the playground. It happens where they can be creative. It's where they can think. It, it's where they make leadership decisions. It happens on the rough edges. So those parts are really important. It stimulates them. So what about if you took a section of trail and created some discovery spaces? And then some examples here are from a park in Denver, Colorado. Or, you know, climb, climb on me. And it's a big log, great big cotton log, cottonwood log, for example, there. Or stack me. There's a loose parts play area in this Denver park where people can build lean twos or forts or whatever with loose sticks and, and two by fours. And it just, you know, has that experience to play that a lot of us grew up with, that we are too, have too many rules and regulations and parks and open space now to allow us to do any of that. So how do you reintroduce this unstructured play on your trail system? And another example here is also just a prefabbed climbing boulder that could be a, you know, just a one part of the trail. So discovery spaces are an important element. Now we're seeing more communities think about these along the trail. So when, when grandma's got to drag their grandson or daughter to the grocery store, it's not, you know, it's not a forced march to get there, but it's an opportunity for the families to interact and stop and play along the discovery spaces before they get to the grocery store, before they get to the chapter house or whatever it might be. So it becomes more of a, a better experience. And the benefits of these, again, just to summarize is extending play value, enabling health promotion, it engages with nature, it reinforces environmental literacy, and it kind of grows community pride. And then the last amenity is healing spaces. Another important part of community trail systems is healing spaces and again, a lot of research has been going into this, a lot of thinking is going into these ideas. Here we've got a community garden as a healing space. So is that something that's feasible along the section of trail that has water nearby for a community garden? There's a labyrinth in this one here as well. And then there's this bench near a tree that's a contemplative spot. You could have a little trail that goes off to the side to have a contemplative bench or structure that has a view of a mesa or some other cool feature that you want to highlight. The healing spaces and the mental health benefits are tremendously important. I believe I've shared our work in Mescalero Apache. When we introduced mental health as a topic of conversation in our community health needs assessment on that project, they told us that they wanted a drumming circle along their trail. An informal drumming circle, not the one they had to go to the fairgrounds to use, but just a place to gather. And that was really important to them because they were, at the time I was working in in Mescalero, there was lots of suicide, lots of suicide attempts. A community that was kind of really down on itself. So bringing back some cultural identity, cultural pride, the drumming circle and ask, and actually memorial to all the Mescalero War Chiefs were two ideas that surfaced because we were talking about the topics. And all my time of doing this work, I've never heard of someone wanting, asking for drumming circles or a memorial to war chiefs until we brought in the mental health benefits of parks and trails and how we can make those work. So your task, Daniel, can I continue with the workbook real quick?
Yes, we have 10 minutes left.
Okay, good. And we'll take questions. Like your task, we're going to put these workbooks out at about eight different sites in the community. And I think there's some logistics to figure that out, but we have a trail development workbook. And it starts off with an overview of the improvements I just presented, what's possible, what you could think about for your community. And I want you to keep in mind that while most of the ideas I presented here are probably not tribal related, everything here is adaptable to cultural sensitivity for Crown Point. So you can change this however you want to, to make it identifiable for your community. And I believe Mr. Perry was alluding to that, some of that of seeing this stuff. So hopefully you can share some of those. How we make this Crown Point centric and more important to Crown Point. But we talked about the surfacing signage amenities at the beginning of the workbook. We want to, you read through the workbook, get familiar with amenities. If you need more help, you can scan the QR code that sends you to the chapter website. We have more notes and more background information, including this PowerPoint presentation with the notes there for you. And we want you to go on a family walk. Complete the workbook together or go by yourself, of course, practicing social distancing and mask up while you do these activities at Crown Point. And then we're going to ask you to turn this stuff back into us and I'll show you the site in a second where to do that. So you know, the first two slides kind of go where we just covered basically. And then the next section has two pages on each one of the core areas. And this example is the education trail. And the education trail is kind of connect, shows here the main area that's been walked and we know people are using with the chapter is where NTU is, where the NAC colleges. So those pieces there and as you're familiar with that area and you're walking it, you can tell us where you think a bench should go or, you know, is there a place for discovery play area somewhere? That would be cool. We want also to tell you then what the improvement should be and you can use these codes and draw the codes right directly on that map. So if we need to have a parking area here, we have a, you know, four or five space parking area here, put the T there. If we need some of the shade structure, it's an SS symbol you can put for shade structure. So follow those along and then our, we'll, we'll combine all this stuff and compile it all and come up with the recommendations from the core steering committee.
And sorry to interject too, but you know, look at these things. If there is a problem with the trail, you know, think of those things that Tilla discussed as a solution. For instance, Felicia said she's been walking that trail and it's been getting flooded. Perhaps that's a good area to put that community garden where we could catch that water and then use that as a benefit to it. So sorry for interjecting, just wanted to.
Oh no, that's exactly, that's right on. So we want your input in the next page, talks about input. So if there is flooding areas you're seeing and we need to deal with drainage, let's deal with that. Let's address those problems. That's a great observation Felicia on, on the flooding. So and that's what, that's a pet peeve of mine. I've seen too many people design trails across the country. And they will look at it in the springtime, build it in the summer and then realize, oh God, I didn't know there was springs here in the fall. I didn't know there was wildflowers here in the fall. I didn't know there was this. So it's really understanding your dynamic before you start construction. So we understand all those and know how to fix it. And we can look at erosion control, flooding issues. I think all those should be pointed out too. So additional notes are welcome. I think the most, one of the intriguing things we're asking you to is priority. So we're, when are new, if you had, if we gave you a hundred dollars for the education trail, how would you allocate that? Would you allocate it all towards surfacing? Would you allocate it all towards flight control? Would you allocate it all towards signage or percentage wise? So we want to get a sense of where people think we should invest our time and energy in improving those systems for each one of those trails. So the workbook has two pages for each one of the sections. And then finally, the last slide is you can contact me at the bottom, email address. You can contact Daniel. And then you can get the Crown Point Navo Chapter.org and there's a, a page, a tab there now for the Trails Project. And leave your completed workbooks at the chapter house. Or you can take a picture of each page, legibly, I hope, and send it and email it to Daniel. And he, and we'll get it reformatted. So different ways to, to get us that workbook. So thanks for the time this afternoon, Daniel.
Yeah, thank you guys. And we want to open up to questions. We have about five minutes left. So if you have any like immediate questions, feel free to ask us right now. But the idea is to really use this as a point to go out and start doing your own, you know, boots on the ground work. Notating where we should do certain types of development. And we identified four trails just based off of what we received during the survey or previous data collection efforts. But if you have ideas of, we need to focus more on connecting the trails, you know, maybe that's the work we need to do. We need some crosswalks that go from TP trail to NTU's trail perhaps. You know, think about it. And then that sense, we wanted to keep it broad. So does anyone have any immediate questions at this point? I'm going to go ahead and unmute yourself. Sorry for meeting all you guys, but if anyone has any questions, now would be the time. Otherwise, you know, use that workbook as your guide and I'd like for you guys to spend about two weeks. If you have time to go out and traverse them and then make little notes and then get us back to it. And then by August 13th is when we want to collect those. And then from there we'll go after the big monies to, you know, this is how we're going to develop them. This is we're going to, how we're going to allocate our time. So. Any questions?
There is, there is money coming folks. I know the Department of Tourism, instead of promoting tourism, the state is going to be looking at on the ground projects to support close to home recreation. So they're looking for youth projects, other things. And I think we could be ready for some tourism money. The Office of Outdoor Recreation is starting an infrastructure fund. The Land and Water Conservation Fund stateside passed. So I think you guys would be eligible to apply for land and water funding improvements. So this plan, basically my, my philosophy has always been money follows a good plan. So if we identify what we want to improve and the chapter, the tribal council adopts this plan and there's an action plan to it. It's pretty much here's our, here's our grandpa polls. We've all the information and we have the demographics and that we have the health needs. We have how important trails are. We have the survey work that can show we really need to do this and we've, we've justified it.
Yeah, we have about two and a half minutes.
I got a quick question. It's new Roger.
Hi Roger.
As far as like the right of ways or anything like that, I don't know if any of these trails ever had any issues of like somebody saying you're not supposed to be here or if along, something along those lines. I don't know if you guys have anything on that.
Yeah, I can share a quick image really quick before we get logged off. But that is something to consider. Just because that is going to be an obstacle when we get to that point, just because is divided. The land status. The land status, I wish I had it readily available right now.
Recognize we've got to address that before we can actually formalize any trail. So any, any legal issues with allotments or who owns it or how it's used has to be addressed and resolved before we can say this is a formal, formal Crown Point trail. So that'll happen on every one of them.
Yeah, Daniel. So this is Eli. That's one of the problems that we had with, that we have with the TP trails. Because pharmacy department here at the hospital gets a lot of residency. Their students come from the east coast. And they run into that problem sometimes where when they're walking the trail, sometimes it'll be closed off. And then they're told that they're not supposed to be in that area because it belongs to so and so's land and so forth.
Yeah. So keep that in mind too. We have less than a minute. So I'm sorry if we're cut off. But even think about it in phases, you know, this is just the very beginning. If we're thinking about a second phase, how could we go about using this first push and towards getting that support? How can we maybe connect to towering house and incorporate tourism? All of those things will come into play, but yeah, excellent points. Keep it in your back of your mind, but it's going to be something we address. Yes. And I think TP is the only trail that's on different types of land right now. All the other three are self-contained by Navajo Nation or BIA. So I just want to thank you guys. We're about to be disconnecting. If you guys have any other questions, please email me. And we'll be sure to keep you guys updated on the latest developments, but thank you for tuning in and thank you for National Park Service.
This was recorded and will be shared on the website, correct?
Yes.